We're on a WebEx platform and able to see each other for the most part. And so that's the format that we're going to use tonight. The real focus of tonight's meeting is to share as much information as we can about what's happening within the state from an education standpoint and within the district. And we've got a number of questions that have been pre-submitted that we're going to go through. But before we go any further, why don't we go ahead and start with the flag salute? And I'll just go ahead and lead us from here in the room.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, infinite.
A virtual flag salute. That's a first for me. Okay, I'll turn it over to the superintendent to give us a brief overview of the agenda.
So we are going to shift a few items. This is, as Chair Love said, this is a unique and unprecedented times that we're going through. So as we talk about the adoption of the agenda, I'm actually going to sort of shift and do my superintendent report first and then follow up with all the communications and the questions that we received up to today and know that there were others that put in questions and we'll continue to answer those in the platforms that we have. But again, we have a majority of, a very large amount of questions to be able to share at this moment in time and will continue to share as we get guidance and move forward. So I just want to shift that a little bit. You'll also see...
I can stop for a moment. The rail just hit me twice. Peggy, will you unmute yourself one time and say yes?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, Peggy, just find us...
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
And farther down in part of the business agenda, there was, we held a spot for graduation requirements that we are going to remove and I'll talk a little bit more about that, you know, as we go through some of the questions because some of that will be as part of that. So that is no longer a need as part of the agenda. So that's the adjustment at this point to our agenda.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we won't be having any of the typical reports from like our ASBAC or Power Piers tonight. So we're going to go ahead and go straight into the superintendent update and the questions that have been pre-submitted. And then we have the consent agenda and then we have the business agenda topic of the potential purchase on 16th Street, so the facility purchase. So that will be the topics for tonight.
Steve?
It's pretty muffled.
Yeah, you're breaking up very badly. I completely understand you, so.
Okay, is that any better?
Yes.
Yeah, that's better. That's a little better, yeah.
Wasn't sure how sensitive the mic was. Well, with no further ado, I'm just going to go ahead and turn it over to Superintendent Cavista.
So I, and again, bear with me because I think it's important that we take this time to share with not only the board but obviously with the community. We've been sharing information of what we have and, you know, I'm going to start with sort of a timeline process to help everybody understand how much this has changed in very three short weeks because I think it will help in some of where we are and answering some of the questions as we go through this. So I'm going to start first with sort of the timeline that came out from the governor and the executive orders because I think that's a part of the process to just start to begin that timeline. So on March 12th, it's when we began the statewide ban on large gatherings and that was Executive Order 20-05, which went into that initial one-week school closure. On March 17th, we received a school closure extension through April 28th. And the public, at that point, public schools, and we still are, continue to receive funding. We would, at that moment, providing supplemental education and learning supports, that we were required to continue with school meals and then really work with supplemental and emergency management services. And again, that was Executive Order Number 20-08. So again, from the 12th to the 17th was a shift in that school closure time. On March 23rd, the governor really shared the stay home except for essential needs, licensed childcare facility closures through April 28th unless emergency childcare was needed, which again, I'll talk through a little bit of childcare because that, we are involved in that, which is a new area for us. And that was Executive Order 20-12. And again, that's really that stay home, save lives approach that you're hearing from her and continuing to hear from her. Then on March 30th, we received from the Oregon Department of Education, they issued the distance learning guidance. So that was really from March 17th when we had the first initial that you are moving forward with supplemental. We continued to build that. As of March 30th, we received new guidance from the Oregon Department of Ed to move to the distance learning for all. And then the goal is to have a plan and a launching date to work through the distance learning for all and have that plan and launching moving forward as of April 13th. And again, I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. So that's the first just sort of timeline of the executive orders that we have had from the state and then obviously some guidance from the Oregon Department of Education. So now I'm going to shift a little bit into what we have been doing since that time because I think it's important for the public to know all the steps we have taken through the weeks, beginning with that week of March 16th. So we began to meet as an administrative team and that's all of my district administration as well as our school building leadership teams. During that time, we were in Hawk Hall, we had to practice social distancing. There was not a minimum, right at that point, we had about 17 people in a room and were allowed to be able to do that. Had to build a protocol of how you come in and out of the room, to wash your hands because safety was starting to be a priority. At that, beginning of that week, we started to develop our supplemental learning plan. Again, that was the first guidance, the meal plan approach with our manager for food services. And then we also began with our amazing custodial staff and our maintenance and facilities managers, the deep clean of all of our facilities. So that was part of that. With that, the meal plans we developed, we started to serve meals at all the schools' sites and that went from 10:00 to 12:00 p.m., or excuse me, yeah, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. We, towards the end of the week, began to draft a calendar for really what the first couple of weeks of supplemental learning would look like. And then towards the end of that week, we began conversations with the YMCA to partner as a childcare provider with the location being Monmouth Elementary, under the executive orders requiring school sites to be childcare provider sites. And again, that was specifically for emergency healthcare workers as the starting point that has expanded a little bit more to other areas such as first responders and other areas.
And that was, that was the week before spring break then?
Correct.
When you guys were working on that?
That was the week leading into, yes, into spring break. So the week of March 23rd, which would have been the week of spring break, we continued with the administrative team daily. We worked in small groups, both virtually and on sites, to begin to, again, continue to build our supplemental learning plan. And I'm going to pause here because there's been some questions about us taking time off. I want to be very clear, our administrative team has been working literally seven days a week. They worked, I think, all, even the building principals, usually the building principals have the week off over spring break and they did not. They maybe took one or one and a half days during spring break because they knew the lift that we would have to take. So I want to just clarify that, that we did work the entire week of spring break to continue to build the supplemental learning plans for the school district. So that, we, at that point, even over spring break, our union leadership came in because at this point I knew that this was not going to just be the administrators within the district. I've been very clear since being the superintendent that staff voice is paramount to our decision-making. And so we began to call the union leadership in several days that week to begin to show them, hey, here's our thinking about the supplemental learning, ask them to please poke holes and push through where they might see concerns and really how, having them build those approaches with us of what that's going to look like for the next several weeks. So again, I spoke to union leadership and I do speak to union leadership probably at least once a day, if not three to four times a day right now am I on the phones or in meetings with union leadership and our staff voices at the table. Also during that week, our meal plans continued and we started to build a bus route meals. So we started to build a plan, really focused on bus routes and implemented that that week. We continued the deep cleaning of all the schools because that was a huge part of one of the big steps we had to move on. We continued partnering with the YMCA. We walked through Monmouth Elementary and began to work the shifting of Monmouth into a childcare center and not so much an elementary school. So we worked with them and again, that was based on the governor's orders to support our emergency workers. We began to complete that application for submittal and we submitted that at the end of the week with the goal of starting up March 30th for our emergency care workers. At that time, we also had to pause because when we, when we were, we had, at this point, have second, or the new guidance from the governor. And so we had to stop because we had to get staff back in the buildings to get a few things because we knew at this point that there was going to have to probably be some remote learning, although it hadn't been said yet. But we knew that we had to move in that direction. So again, I'm going to, you're going to hear me sound like a broken record, but that's okay. The safety and security of my, our staff and our students and this community is my highest priority. So before we even allowed staff to come back into the buildings, we built a very detailed protocol on how they were going to social distance coming in, how they were going to, you know, wash their hands, glove up, directions of how they're going to go into their rooms so they weren't touching spaces, although all the spaces had been cleaned. We wanted to try and keep those areas as clean as possible while they picked up their materials during that, that week. And again, this was, at this point, our directive to staff was, go in, please grab your Chromebooks. What guidance we have right now is this will be supplemental learning and that we will be able to teach up to what we were teaching March 13th. And so that was really the directives as our staff went into the buildings and the principals did a really good job of answering those questions for our staff. We trialed this because obviously we were moving forward with Monmouth Elementary as a childcare site. So the Thursday before the staff came in, we had seven teachers who came and we nicely said, hey, you're our trial, we're going to see how this works. They did a beautiful job. We made some adjustments based off of feedback from them, but them sharing with us, how did that go? How'd that make you feel? Yep, we understand that this is very different and a very weird and unprecedented situation, but they were able to get in and get what they needed based off of the guidance that we had at that moment. At this point, we also began to pull Chromebooks. So we asked teachers to just, you know, as best they could to put Chromebooks in the middle of the rooms or near the doors. We started to gather all of the Chromebooks from all the sites and deploy them to the central high school library. We felt that that was going to be the best spot to start that process. So in there, we have a team that is working to gather all the Chromebooks, clean them and prepare them because we knew at some point, my gut told me that something might change. And so that was one of the key things that I wanted to make sure that we had those pieces in place and in one site as we potentially, even though I didn't know where we were going, but I knew that at some point we were going to need to get devices into students' hands. So started that process that week. At that point, our tech team also started to do some research on equipment to purchase, to develop Wi-Fi hotspots across the two towns. And I'll talk a little bit more about Wi-Fi here, but I think just from a timeline, I want everybody to understand that we need to build some capacity within our two communities to be able to have students, all students, be able to access internet. And that is a work in progress, but that work started the week of the 23rd. And then we made some final adjustments in conversations with the union leadership, final adjustments to our supplemental plan, but really had started to move forward to build those. The focus was really that social, emotional learning and routines. Our community and our state and nationally are going through some very unprecedented times. It is very important for me as a superintendent to say, the health of not only our bodies but our minds is very important to me as a superintendent and the reason that we focused on making sure that emotionally our families had materials to talk with students, that our families themselves had materials to talk amongst themselves as adults and moving forward. We also felt it was important to help parents to start to build routines. So we gave a couple of different examples of what that might look like and shared with the staff that, or excuse me, shared with our families that we are learning and growing and trying to develop this as quickly as we can. And I said in my letter, we feel like we're riding a bicycle and we're really wobbly and sometimes we're going to fall off and scrape our knees and have to get back up and bandage ourselves and get back onto the bike. So again, we're just, we're being very transparent in where we are in this process. So we had made some of those final adjustments based off that to begin to really develop the first supplemental learning. So this past week, again, we used our building protocol that I talked about to get staff into the building so they could collect, again, their Chromebook and at that moment, that supplemental material. So on the morning of the 30th, it's when staff were starting to come in. That afternoon is when we got the shift in the distance for learning. So again, I had already started to bring our staff in, they were already gathering those things and then at the afternoon is when we had a, superintendent had a phone call with the Oregon Department of Ed and that was the shift to the distance learning.
Up until that point, it had been just supplemental up through things that had been taught through mid-March.
Correct. And again, even right now, we're having, and I'll get into a little bit more of where we are with the distance learning.
So Jen, we can't hear Steve at all when he talks.
Okay. Gotcha.
I think Steve just needs to get closer to the microphone or project his voice a little more.
Okay.
He's by the eight.
I just, I asked the superintendent if, up until the 30th, what the, what the direction from the state had been was just supplemental learning, so things that had already been addressed in the classroom? And then on the 30th, it shifted to more full distance learning? So I was just clarifying that, that timeline.
So also during that week of the 30th, we began to develop a telecommuting process for staff as we were wanting to meet the guidance of stay home, save lives, while also being required to deliver that supplemental learning to students. And again, we are, it's important to me and I'm going to say it again and I will probably say it 100 times, the safety and security of our students and staff and this community is my number one priority. And so everything is being guided by those pieces as we move forward in making decisions. So we started to build that telecommuting process and what that looks like in reaching out to staff. There is some guidance because there are, there are specific categories that if staff fall into it, that they cannot come to and should not be at work. And so we are abiding by those guidance by the governor, by the Oregon Health Authority as we build these plans because again, the safety and security of our students, staff and this community are my number one priority. So again, we received directive from Oregon Department of Ed that supplemental learning was now that distance learning for all. That, again, meeting took place at 2:00 p.m. on the 30th and then we started to make shifts moving forward. The district still moved forward because we felt that up to the week of that 13th and probably even into that week of the 13th as we build the plan, that we were still going to need to do some supplemental packets. So again, the district developed the first packet of social, emotional learning and routines. The next packet, which will come out this week, is coming. Our educators have been working as teams to build packets that will come home or come to our families this week again, at all levels. So again, you're going to see those packets with that. We finalized those packets and they were mailed out April 2nd. Meals, plans, yes, Jen?
Do the packets still go to the cell phone or through the menu?
So there is, there's a combination of things. So we'll still have social, emotional learning in there, there's going to be English language arts, there's going to be some math, there's going to be some reading. At the secondary levels, there'll be some social studies and science. So it is a little bit more of a review that our staff has been working with the principals to put together that will be mailed out this week.
So Jen, I don't know if you can answer this, but I was told that our kids have access to their Zern accounts still when it comes to math. Is that, is that accurate?
So there's a, yeah, so part of this is working through as we get into the distance learning to be able to access different applications and we're working with the principals even also on just links to give to parents and building that as well. Again, part of this is, is I'm trying to be equitable to all students and not everyone has access to a computer. And so we're trying to develop both ends of this because sometimes we're going to still have to go with packets and other times we're going to, as we deploy the Chromebooks and things, because again, we're still going to have students that have a Chromebook and may not have Wi-Fi. So we're trying to build all of those avenues as we go into this. So yes, that will be part of that process in the distance learning. We've started some of those pieces with a team, which I'll talk about here in a, in a little bit here. Meals continued on both schools and buses. And then we also added, the week of the 30th, an option for families to request a full seven days of meals. And we've had a pickup of that, our first group was 28 families that requested that. So that was added in that last week as we moved forward. We continued with the deep cleaning of our buildings and then on that Monday, we opened the doors to childcare site for emergency workers at Monmouth Elementary. Again, I gave directives to make sure all computers were moving and being deployed to the high school so we could begin to clean them. As I, again, I had a feeling that at some point we were going to need all devices to go out to schools. The tech team began, so we had talked about what are our avenues to build additional Wi-Fi spots across our town and in the cities and in the rural. So our tech team began to purchase equipment to develop those spots around the rural areas. And I'm going to stop for a second. We have parts of our school district that are out in the rural areas that do not have connections or strong connections. So we are trying to build plans and then I'm going to say the cities are involved in this conversation to look at where we may need some of those main Wi-Fi spots to start to support allowing and moving forward so everybody does have access from a, with the Chromebooks to be able to do distance learning. And then I began to review the, again, on that Monday, we got the guidance Tuesday in between meetings and really diving into it. I spent 24 hours reading the over 45 pages of the distance learning to get a real understanding of what we're going to need to do and what that's going to look like moving forward. We have developed a distance learning committee that is, in that involves our union leadership, our administrative teams and leadership, as well as classified and licensed staff. So again, I'm going to be very clear about this. This, as I've said from the beginning, our unions have great voice at the table right now. They are a partner in this. I am walking side by side with them. They are doing a phenomenal job to support the teaching staff that, again, we are in unprecedented times because teachers are used to moving and we're going quite slow because of some of the things that we're needing to build. Within that team, we have really, based off of the guidance from Oregon Department of Ed, we've really broken into four subcommittees. A logistic committee that's looking at, we have guidance to do attendance and progress monitoring or marking, as well as there's some things tied to high school, which again, I'm just going to say now, we still don't have guidance for high school. We are still waiting for that. So I'm just going to, and you'll hear me say that probably a couple of times, but we still are waiting for that guidance from that. So we have a logistics committee that's working on some of those. We are waiting for guidance on attendance, yet my team is starting to build if, vens so we can start collecting ourselves what we believe attendance will be and then as we get guidance, we will have to adjust our plans. We also have a professional development because there was an assessment that the committee, there's a rubric that the Oregon Department of Education gave us, one tied to the technology connectivity that we have in our town or what's our capability, Wi-Fi and/or internet? And then what's the efficacy of our students and our staff and their ability to teach online learning? The committee, again, a mix of licensed staff, classified staff and administrative staff, assessed us about overall at about a 2.5 in both of those. High end is five. We know that there are, there are some pieces that we have to still build and will continue to build as we go through, go through these plans. So there's a professional development committee that is being built because we know some of the first needs with our staff will, will be a push from a technology end. We have, we are reaching out and Adrian Galt, who is our president of our licensed class of, licensed staff, and then we have Carol Stewart, who is the president of our classified staff. We're trying to gather the lead people and then begin to say where can they help support in those areas of professional development. So there's a team working on what are the first few things that our staff will need to be able to build and continue the distance online learning so we can have kids moving forward and learning and growing and we'll continue to develop that. We have a technology committee and this is really working on the infrastructure, everything from the count of Chromebooks, the cleaning of Chromebooks, the setting up of the Wi-Fi, the, how we are going to deploy the Chromebooks, all of that team in conjunction with the other subcommittees are working through that. And so they're taking the lead on some of those. And then lastly is the teaching and learning subcommittee, which is, which is being led by the union leadership on the licensed side. They are the co-leads and that's very important in this process because they are the teachers. We have other members of administration classified in that team, but we are working, as I said, their voices, our staff voices are very much in the room. They sit in high leadership meetings with us right now because we are breaking the mold of what has been in the past. There is no such thing. We're really building to try and move in that direction that, that we are working as a team and it is some gut-wrenching conversations right now, but very positive as a school system.
And all these...
And I'm going to say on the side of our staff as we try and build this as quickly as possible.
I'm going to pause for just a second. Darcy, Earth will, like, with you and Stabu, it looks like we did that in the meeting. Darcy, can you hear this?
Um, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you. We're going to be up in over time and Darcy...
Welcome, Darcy.
Hi, sorry, it took me a little bit.
I'm not sure if anybody else is experiencing this, but the video screen is frozen.
That's what's been happening to me this whole time.
But I can hear perfectly, but on the live stream, I have live, so.
The video is frozen on the left or on the right?
It's frozen on our, our end. But on the, on the live stream, I've contacted a couple of constituents and they said that they're seeing everything live in real time, so.
Perfect.
That's the important part. I can hear, I don't really need to see everybody, so that's fine.
Thanks, thanks for that all. So that, that really is where we are. The committee was formed on last Thursday. Subcommittees were then developed from there. They had their first meetings today. We literally went from 8:00 to 11:00 with the subcommittee meetings and then we did a large committee meeting at the end of the day. What I can tell you right now, at this moment in time, you're starting to see alignment in the direction that we need to go for distance learning and we'll, again, I'm going to talk a little bit more because some of that is, are those processes that we will be moving forward with. What I would ask the community, and I know that this is... What I would ask the community, and I know that this is difficult. And I'm also going to say that I know that everybody likes to compare different types of school districts. And I, and we are learning, don't get me wrong. I'm having conversations with school districts around us, school districts in Washington, school districts in other parts of the country that I have connections with that may be several weeks ahead of us. I'm asking everyone to be patient. We have an amazing team. We are building distance learning to get through the rest of the school year. Again, I have to work up to April 28th and that is our focus. But I'm also know that this is going to be, I believe it's going to probably continue. The governor has not said that, so I want to be clear about that. But I am needing to build not only the present up to the 28th, but potentially the months after that to get to the end of the school year. So again, I want to be clear. The governor has not said that yet. But we're starting to see just different things of the next two weeks and some of the data that we're looking at of the actual virus across the state that it's still moving in a upward trajectory on, on the, the cycle. So be patient with us. I ask be flexible, be adaptable. We are, we have been building plans and something has changed and we've had to make a left turn. And then we've made that left turn and built the plans and then had a right turn. And so we're continuing to do that and do the decisions. And we're going slow, but I, we are going fast to try and make sure that we do have programming that is equitable and that kids are engaged in the learning through that process. I'm going to say it again. Safety is my number one priority for our students, for our staff in this community. When the governor says stay home, save lives, that is my job. I'm an essential worker. I have staff that are essential workers, but we are doing our best to stay home and save lives as we build this process moving forward. I want to give, before I go into answering some questions, just a couple more points. I have to give some huge shout-outs to our staff before I take any further steps in answering questions. The frontline people and our bus drivers and transportation and our food service and our classified staff that have been there every day and making meals and, and doing those things, I cannot say thank you enough. We wouldn't be able to do this without all of you and you know that. And so please know from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate you all and everything that you are doing each and every day. I'm going to say the same thing about our custodial staff. They have been working very hard to make sure our buildings are safe and clean. Again, from the bottom of my heart to our staff, thank you so much for your guidance and continued leadership in those areas as we can continue forward in these unprecedented times. You also know that I, all, I do like data. So of course I have some data points about meals. So our first week of meals, which would have been the week of, and excuse me as I look back, the week of March 16th, we had a total of 541 students. That's the average total that picked up meals during that week. So that is a total of 1,082 meals because we did both breakfast and lunch in combo. The second week, we did a total of 708 students averaged per day. And that's a total of a 1,416 meals, both breakfast and lunch. And then this past week, we averaged 816 students that came to pick up meals. And again, that's about a six, 1,632 both breakfast and lunch meals. So we're seeing that uptick of our, of our meal counts continue to grow within, within each week. I'm going to pause because, and I know I've already said it, but sometimes it's important as the superintendent, my job is sometimes a broken record and I am going to do this. We have amazing leadership from the union end in this school district. I have never been so proud to have Adrian Galt and Jason Volcheck, who are the union leaderships on the licensed side, and Carol Stewart and Denise Chase, who are the leadership on the classified side. They have sat in meetings with me. They have pushed. They have asked clarifying questions. Their voice, and I'm going to say this to all the staff that are in the district, their voices, you, you are being heard by them. They are conveying your voices. They heard the safety concerns. We took that very seriously. And we are trying to build things as safely as possible for you as we continue down this journey. So I just want to say thank you also from the bottom of my heart to our union leadership. I wouldn't be able to be doing with what we're doing to build this without, without them being at the table and being a really good thought partner in that, in this process. Again, I, I want to also say we have an amazing administrative team. They've been working hard through this process. So thank you from the bottom of my heart as we can continue down this road. I do want to say that we, we are going to run into some barriers and we are, we are going to work through those. The, the connectivity issue for all students, the internet and Wi-Fi access within our community, we're continuing to work through that. But I know that that's going to be a barrier and it's going to take us a couple of weeks on our side to build that infrastructure. So we have hotspots throughout all of our community, in the rural areas as well as in town, for students and parents to be able to access so they can, students can get learning. Distance learning will be a mix of both online as well as packets still because not everyone will still have access to Wi-Fi or that connectivity. So we are trying to find a balance of that mixed sort of media approaches as we build the distance learning for all. And then I'm going to talk about the distance learning for all plan. We have been very thoughtful in a short period of time and sort of have a mantra that we are, we are sort of guiding our work because we think it's important. These are unprecedented times, unprecedented closures, and we are asking for a major shift in how we do education for students in the, in the K-12 world. So what I've asked our team to, to really think about, and this has also been conveyed to our, our staff, is I need them to think like a student. I need them to think like a student that's at home. And this is a new place for them to figure out what the education is going to look like for them. I need them to think like a, like a educator, right? We are, we are having those, the teaching and learning side, which they, they do so eloquent, eloquently. I need them to think about the learning environments that students are currently in. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a second because I think that's important. And I want us to think about the families. Because not only are we having education at home, families are working from home. And so we're trying to help and find that balance of what that looks like in the routines that we know families are going to have to start to set up. So here's a couple scenarios I just want to share so people understand how we are thinking through this to support our students as well as our families. So we, we give a couple examples. So we are thinking about the mom who is a nurse, who has worked 14 hours the day, days the past week. And she has the night shift from 7:00 PM till 10:00 AM. And she has to come home and support the learning of her students and then get back out at 7:00 PM and go to her job as a nurse. So that's a scenario. We are thinking about the dad that was just laid off. And that dad is trying to figure out how he's going to feed his third and eighth grader as well as figure out how is he going to do this teaching while he's at home, plus all the other things of meeting bills, et cetera, from that perspective. We are thinking about the mom and dad who are setting up their home offices and working through the challenges of working through at home. Their youngest child being a three-year-old and their oldest two, one is in a middle school and one is going into high school that we take. And the Wi-Fi in their area has been spotty. So they're trying to figure out how that system works to be able to support them moving forward. We have the dad who's trying to teach two different lessons, one to a kindergartner and one to a ninth grader. And how he's working through those things. And that's tough for a dad because a kindergarten and a ninth grade approach are very different at times when you talk about teaching and learning. We, we talk about the mom and dad who are sheltered in place with their five children and fear that immigration might show up at any time because of our community. And I am, the Latinx community is a very large part of our community. It's 43% of our students. And we are thinking about them. We are trying to keep, who are trying to keep themselves busy, but not to draw attention. We think about that every day as we think about what our approaches are to support the students and our families. We're thinking about the parents and the, and the teachers that are in our district that also have children who are trying to build this while I'm also asking them to be and build this distance learning moving forward. And then again, we, we think about the students whose parents are emergency workers and they are the only ones at home alone. And they're going to have to figure out how to do this learning by themselves. So I, I paused there before I go into some questions and we'll, we'll open it up, I'm going to say to the board first. Because I think that we are trying to build as fast as we can, but being, being thoughtful in that. There's also some safety concerns about, we are moving to an internet platform. We, I have been following lots of different states and some of the issues that they have had. The platform of which we will use will be a very important part of that. And we, we will share more with that guidance because we do have a platform that we use in the school district. And we believe that we have enough in that platform to be able to meet the needs of everything that we need to do. But, but my job is also to protect when students are online, that we're protecting them at that place too. And so there are some security measures that we need to make sure that are in place as we get onto the connectivity and the internet. And we are seeing some not very good things across different states that kids are being exposed to because people moved too fast and didn't think of those consequences before going to a virtual learning platform. And that is very important to me, and I'm going to say it again. The safety and security of the students, our staff and this community of which I am a part of is my number one priority as we work through this. So I'm going to pause and let the board, if there are questions for you before I go into any questions or the questions that have been shared with us through the community thus far.
Okay. Yes, Jen? So Jen is asking if, if the superintendent will be adding or naming more people to the tech committee to pull this off?
I, I think that we will be fine. I think where we're going to, it is, right now, you know, we, it is finding who are the, the tech savvy teachers and classified staff in our, in our district to help build and, and support that. That's really the conversation with the professional development learning committee, as well as the teaching and learning subcommittee, to say, who do we know that is really good at distance learning? And how can they help and support as we move forward? Because not only, I mean, we're talking about kids having to get online and adults having to get online. And both may not feel successful in that. So we're, we're building protocols to make that happen. I think we have a very amazing tech team that is thinking through all of those processes. It's a small mighty team and we will, and that's part of what the committee has agreed to, that we're a committee of 20, but knowing that probably very quickly we will grow. Because we are going to need more supports to build the trajectory of that distance learning for all as we move forward. So we will, so we'll have a, so, yeah, so the question was, well, go ahead, Steve, I'll let you do it.
Well, Jen was asking the following question about what happens if we have inappropriate content come onto the internet, either parent or student during the, you know, distance learning.
So we are in the process of building what that protocol will look like. Because we know that, again, we're trying to build this on our platform and trying to take all of those as best we can options away. But again, we have, it's just, we are dealing with a lot of different pieces of that moving forward. But we will have a protocol in place both for, because really, both for our staff, to protect our staff if that happens. But then also to have those mechanisms for either an older student and/or a parent to be able to connect with us to share that information. And then we will have to really back map if we can figure out where it came from or again, work in tightening, continuing to tighten, tighten up our systems. Our systems are quite tight right now. That's a little frustration for our staff because sometimes they want to go to websites. But at this moment, I, we will keep it tight and we will have to work through some of those bumps with our staff as we, as we move forward.
So to other members of the board, you have questions? You can come off mute and in no particular order. I just, it's open to the board now for questions to the superintendent.
Um, I had a question. I keep getting this question from parents about, when is the official day where students, I guess, can expect to be contacted by their, and I know maybe we can't say this yet, expect to be contacted by their high school teachers? I know we're kind of starting, you know, high school senior down. But I guess do you have a day other than just April 13th that we're going to, the plan for the high school?
Yep, so board member Kirk is asking, when, when can parents or students expect to be contacted by their teachers? In particular at the high school level, but it's probably throughout.
So we, as I said before, we are still waiting for guidance on high school. We still do not have that guidance yet. So that's sort of that spot that we're in. We're hoping it's going to come this week. But we thought potentially it would come last week. So again, we just are trying to continue to build of what may be. We know that staffs are starting to reach out this week and a little bit last week to our students or families to reach. We are working through technology. So some of those phones may come and show as a blocked. And so staff are leaving messages, a place to reach back out to them to be able to do that. So I know that is starting this week and those, those connections will, will continue with that. We, we are hoping that the guidance for high school is coming this week. And once that will come, we'll probably need 24 hours to, because I'm sure it will be lengthy, 24 hours to dive into it and then can start to build our plans and whatever that guidance may be. Because they may, they may direct us to do things already with seniors. So again, that's part of that discuss, discussion or pieces that we're waiting from, from the Oregon Department of Ed. People keep saying, Jen, why don't you just go? I think one of the concerns is we can go, but there's going to be frustration if I go and then we have to completely undo things. And so I know that it may look like I'm going slow. I'm being intentional because I don't want to build and then rip down. We have had to do that three times already. And we will continue to do that because I'm going to say again, the guidance may change again. And we may have to change again. And so I want people to be patient. I want people to be flexible and I want people to be adaptable. We are working in the best interest of this school district, our students, our staff and this community. And Darcy, that will come this week, or Director Kirk, that will come this week to have our staff start to reach out to students more consistently.
I think that's really important for the, for the public to hear that statement that you just made, Jen. Because I mean, I've gotten, just like, just like, uh, Darcy, I'm getting a lot of questions as, as to why we are, are so limited or slow or, or taking our time. And I, and I don't think that we're, we're doing that intentionally. I mean, we're doing it intentionally, but I don't think it's, it's because we're slow. It's because, like you said, not wanting to build something just to tear it down and then build another one and then tear it down like we've already done, like you said. But I think that's a very, very valid point for the public to hear and I hope that they hear that. What's that?
No, we just, Vidal, we wanted to make sure that your comments were heard out to the community. And it, we, we got that, that it was. And, and I, and I appreciate that, Vidal, because I have very thoughtful staff that are working. And again, I, I want to say this. We are, we are working in form or fashion seven days a week. That is, even including our, our teachers and our classified, you know, we are, we are working diligently to build what is right by that. Again, I think it's, we need to be careful of comparing us. I also want to say my total administrative team is 17. We're, you know, we're 3,300. Salem Kaiser is 40,000. They probably have, and again, please know, I- They probably have, and again, please know, I have a great relationship with Salem Kaiser. We are having great conversations with them, but our systems are not the same and we're, we are trying to build in this district what's right for our students, our staff and our community for the distance learning and with the priority of the safety, all safety in that perspective moving forward.
Other questions from the board?
Well, I, I submitted quite a few, quite a few questions from my constituents and I, I think Emily got them to, to you, Jen. And I'll just wait to see if, if some of them are addressed.
Yeah, we, we will work through, there were definitely lots of similar questions so we'll work through those, but I want to give you guys a chance before we start going through those questions.
I think the only question that I have, that I, that I know I didn't include in the, in my email is we were told that the, that the high school was going to get first dibs on, on the Chromebooks. Has that started yet? And if not, when is that going to start? And then how many days is, is the high school going to take precedent for the Chromebooks? And then when does, when does the rest of the, the grade levels start getting their?
Yep. So we, we believe that the, both the technology team in the subcommittee, committee meeting today and then when they shared with that the high school will go the end of this week. We're looking at Friday as starting that process. And then next week, we would finish with high school with the goal of getting middle school, both high school, middle school done next week and then moving into the elementary. Again, we know that they're in that process. We're still going to do some of the supplemental packets. Our staff is continuing to work on that with our administrative leaderships in the building. And so again, that is our rollout process because we are also in that, we want to build a good distance learning platform. And again, we're, we're moving in that direction so we can have consistent, based off the guidance that came from Oregon Department of Ed for distance learning for all to start to build that and then start to begin to be, build those connections with kids on our platforms when they get those Chromebooks. Even so much that my tech subcommittee today said, we will have on the Chromebooks with it a piece of paper that says, how do you open it up? How do you put, turn it on? How do you get your password? I mean, all of that will be lined out. So we're trying to build, so parents don't, they have guidance to help them with those processes so they don't run into any troubles. We are also in the process of trying to build, what I'm going to say is a tech call center and I'm going to go back to what Director Job asked about, what other tech needs do you have? I mean, that's part of the conversation with the tech subcommittee of if and when we run into issues, which we will, for students getting on, how do we make and work through those processes? So the tech team is building that process as well of not only how do you turn the machines on, machine on? How do you get in there? How do you get your password? As well as what, what are those pieces that we are going to have when there is going to be, need some technical assistance on the student slash family side as we share out Chromebooks?
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I think we're actually crossing over into some of the questions that were submitted in advance of the meeting. So I would suggest we actually start going through these and if that's okay with you, superintendent. And somebody's actually already been.
Yeah. Darcy, I have another question though.
Darcy, you want to hold until we go through the Q and A and then we'll, we'll open it back one more time?
No problem.
And Darcy and Vidal, if you can hear yourselves, so that's not a test.
Perfect. So the first one is really focused on, we, we tried to categorize and bring those together and there were a lot of repeat questions or the same question over and over. So we, we've narrowed those down and we want to make sure that we answer all of those pieces. So the first section is really focused on the online and the distance learning for all process. So the general question is, what is the plan for online schooling? My goal is to have our initial draft out to the community by the end of this week for the distance learning for all plan and what that implementation rollout and timelines we'll look at moving forward. I'm going to say it again, one of the main priorities we are also working through is the safety, specifically the internet and protecting our students while online. We have done a lot of learning from other states around us who did not take that, a little bit of what I'm going to say conservative approach and just sort of jumped in because we are seeing, and this has been one of my priorities, when I started to see that last week in some of the platforms that were being used, we had to start to pivot in our thinking in what those platforms we are going to allow our staff and our students to move forward with. And I will go slow for safety to make sure that we have as much as possible the safety and security. And then that will allow me to go fast in the teaching and learning development if we do this correctly. And that's very important to me. I am going to state, we are going to prioritize the high school first and that's why the deployment is to them. Again, once we receive guidance, because we are waiting for guidance, which we are hoping will come this week, there is, and as I say this, our whole K-12 system is about learning. However, when you get to ninth through 12th grade, this is where credits and GPAs and things like that start to come into play. And so we really need to keep them moving in the right direction. And so we want to deploy as necessary to our high school first and foremost. And again, that first will be, what, what are the needs, once we get the guidance from the state, what are the needs of the seniors that maybe we have to meet or have not met? What are the needs of the juniors, sophomores, freshmen and so on? Again, I want to be clear, not that I do not care about K-8, but the high school is very important. This is a little bit of a different shift for them. So I want to make sure that we have the, the tools and the mechanisms in place for them so they can do what they need to do moving forward. And again, we'll still have packets coming to K-8. There may still be packets coming to the high school as we transition this. So there will be learning that will continue to come to families as we move forward and build the process of distance learning for all. So that's really what our plan will look like as we move forward. We will continue to give updates. We have hired a communications consultant this past week and she has been very helpful and so we'll continue to work with her to be able to continue to share out messages as we move forward in the implementation of the distance for learning all. And I said, the teams, today was really the first day of getting into what do we need to build and implement to get this work moving forward? I was actually just listening as the colleagues were sharing out and you could start to see the alignment of all the subcommittees as we move forward. So we are moving in a positive direction, really focused on distance learning for all, for everybody. But there is going to be some heavy lifting as we move forward. So are all kids getting Chromebooks? So yes, we, we believe we have enough Chromebooks to move forward. So yes, we believe if a student needs it or if a family needs a couple, if there are those needs, we do believe we will have enough of devices to be able to deploy out where, where we need. We know some students will, may have, already have computers at home and we know that families, we want families to be able to use those, but we do believe we have enough Chromebooks to deploy to any student that does need that. There was, and part of that question is, and we sort of mix this together into one question, there was questions, we did a survey out to families. We asked families if they, and again, this is part of our learning and growth. We asked families, did they have access to, to device and internet? But we didn't ask the question of, you know, do you have multiple devices? Because we are, at that point, we now realize that parents are now staying home, so they're using that device. So we know and have heard that need and we will take, we, we will move forward with, if you need a Chromebook, we will be moving forward with giving Chromebooks out to students and families that do need them. So it says, with distance learning, with the distance learning model, unfortunately there will be some students at a disadvantage such as students whose parents are either working essential jobs and cannot be at home to help them and our English language learner community whose parents may not be able to help due to working essential jobs and being able to work through those processes as well as our students with disabilities. What's the best way to make this equitable in these cases? So we are still working and with ODE to, and they're still waiting and having those conversations on that guidance for distance learning and to continue that programming and what that looks like. We are asking families to work with us. We are still getting guidance to make sure that we build the best supports and plans for all students. And I'm going to say that again. We are building to, we are moving to build the best supports for all students within this school district. That means our general, that means all of our students, our students that are emerging bilinguals, our students that, that have or experiencing disabilities, our students that may be on a 504 plan, our students that may be talented and gifted that we can continue to push forward. All of that is part of the conversation that we are building to move learning forward equitably for all students within the, the school districts. I do not have all the answers for that yet. We're continuing to work with our partners at the Oregon Department of Ed, different special education groups that we are in connection with regionally, with our Director of Student Services with Julie Homan and our team continues to work to build the best supports. Again, same thing on the emerging bilinguals within, within the school district. Please knows that this lens is at the center and I know that may frustrate people because we are going slower, but my job as a superintendent is to educate every student that walks through this door. And I am going to do that and we're going to build with our staff the ways to do that. And, and I don't have all the answers and we will continue to build because we are going to build what's right for the learning and supports of our students and staff. Is the online school going to be teacher-led or are you relying on us parents to do teaching with really assigned homework? Again, there's guidance from ODE that relates to the amount of direct instruction per day and we're looking at that guidance to see how we will build that into the day. So I think it is going to be a combination of teacher-led time. Again, we're building it and our goal is to build it in that multimedia platform, which we're still developing because it is going to be a mix of online as well as it could still be a paper packet type of approach at times as we build this learning to support students. And so all of those platforms are being built right now as we talk through this. So it is going to be a combination of that. We are trying to, you know, figure out those plans of how do we support kids that might struggle and what's that going to look like? And we are building plans to figure that out and we will continue to communicate out as we, as we allow our teaching staff. And I, I'm going to be clear about this, the teaching and learning subcommittee is being driven by teachers. Our classified also have voice because they are, at times our instructional assistants work side by side with teachers. So, you know, their voices is part of that conversation as we move forward. Administrators are on that just supporting to make sure that we are, are answering and asking all the right questions to build really good distance learning for all as we move, move forward. So more of that will come out as we build and get guidance from the Oregon Department of Ed and, and the partners that we're working with regionally in supporting that. What about IEPs and 504s? Again, I spoke a little bit about this, but again, this is one of our guiding principles as we look at our distance learning, that we are going to support every student in the school district. We're still working through that guidance of what that looks like. Again, we don't have all the answers, but we are working to get all those answers so we can make sure that we're supporting every student. Again, this is at the Leonard, this is one of my core values, the equity of, of making sure that all students learn. I think that's partly why the board chose me as a superintendent here, but they can say differently to that. But I do believe that was part of that lens of why I was hired as the superintendent of Central School District. When can we expect high schoolers to be able to receive assignments of supplemental work? That will come this week. So packets will be coming out this week to all families, specifically K-12. And that, as I said earlier, and Director Job asked, what are those areas of focus? It's going to be social emotional learning, there'll be some reading, there'll be some writing, there'll be some math. For sixth or 12th grade, a little science, a little social, social sciences. So we will continue a little bit of physical education because that's very important to us as well. So you're going to see a breadth of, of different options for students to be able to do with the packets that will come out this, this next week. And I'm going to say it again, and I know I sound like a broken record, we still do not have guidance about the high school. We, once we have that, we will quickly dive into it, build our plans and communicate that out to our seniors first and foremost and then to our families and the communities of students within our, within the central high school. So the next section is specifically focused on graduation and seniors and I, I'm going to say this, because we don't have guidance yet and what I can tell you is I have guidance for school closure up to April 28th. And that is the extent of my information. Beyond that, we have, those decisions have not been made. That's really up to the governor, the Oregon Health Authority and the Oregon Department of Education. So I'm going to sound a little bit like a broken record unfortunately for a short period of time here, but we are doing our best to try and answer these questions and we'll continue to answer these questions as we get guidance. So there's questions about improving standing grades of our high school students. I've received documentation from other states that during the remote learning time, that a student can only improve their grades, not lower. Does Central School District have plans to do something similar? My student is concerned of what remote learning is going to look like for a couple of classes and when we hear from individual teachers what their plans are. Again, we do not have guidance from the Oregon Department of Education. We are waiting for that guidance for high school. Because this is credit driven, we do not feel comfortable moving a plan forward of then communicating out to families of what we think might be right and then having to completely redo it because the guidance is different. So once we have that guidance, we will dive into it to be able to answer those questions about grades and different things. What about missing late work that we are, that we're actively working on? Can that still be turned in? Again, we're waiting for that guidance. We know that that probably may be part of that process, but we'll continue to work through once we have that information from the Oregon Department of Ed. I know my high school junior is concerned that he won't have a chance to improve upon his standing grades and how could that could affect his trans, transcript and his senior year. Would love insight on what the plans is for existing classes and grades moving forward this year. Again, I look forward to that guidance as well and how we approach that moving forward with the Oregon Department of Education once we receive their guidance. So again, a lot of that, I, I don't know that right now, but we will, once we have that, start to be able to communicate out that information to, A, the students and then the families as well. Are assignments provided by teachers optional? If not, how will we communicate with students? My child seems to think that he doesn't need to complete assignments. Again, we're, we are wanting students to be engaged. Right now that, again, our, our packets are supplemental learning. We want students to keep learning and, and moving forward. I know teachers are going to connect with students again this week as we continue this process moving forward. So we don't have that guidance. Again, I, as I shared, I feel like a little bit of a broken record, but once we have that guidance about grades and assignments, because I do think that will come with, with the guidance for high school because it is credit driven, you know, we will work through those, those situations and as they are shared with us and what that guidance might be for us moving forward as a school district.
Jen, I have a question about the, about the contact that the teachers are going to have with the students.
Yes.
And I'm not sure if you were going to get to that, but I just wanted to bring it up because it's kind of along that, that, those lines. I have a couple of constituents that have told me that their, their teacher friends were told that they have to stick to a certain script when speaking with the students on, when they're contacting them. Is that, is there, is that true to that or is that the guidance or, I mean?
So we, we worked to just give them, yeah. So that question was that, that there was guidance given in regards to reaching out to families and, you know, that there was a script given. Yeah, we, we were giving scripts because we wanted to make sure staff was comfortable reaching out to families. For some staff, that is an easy thing to do, Vidal, but for others, that can be difficult. And again, I think we have great staff, but we all, like myself, we have strengths and we have areas where we continue to grow and just allowing for that comfortability, we gave some guiding questions for them to use. That conversation took place with administration and with our union leadership as a, as a starting point to, to start as a guide as we began this work. It was a little bit intentional because we wanted to make sure, how are, you know, asking things like how are kids doing, how are families doing, what needs might you have? We did another check-in about our, you know, do you need a Chromebook? Do you have access to wifi? So teachers are doing some of those first, second, or that first script checked based on some information that we needed to do. But again, moving forward, Vidal, we want, our staffs are going to continue to communicate with, excuse me, families and students to be able to have those connections and begin that learning moving forward. So yes, there was a little bit of an intentional approach because we wanted to make sure we had the correct information as we built this plan and moving forward. Again, the, that piece of guidance was to just support staff as they began to call students because we were wanting some key information as we built this. students because we were wanting some key information, uh, as we built this plan moving forward. So again, just got in as a guy.
That makes sense.
To help, to help gather information, uh, to make sure that our planning and that we have all the right things because again, if I knew that we are going to be short Chromebooks, then I would need to buy those. And so we want to make sure that we're continuing to gather that information and, and double checking things as we, as we build this.
All right. Thanks, Jen.
Yes. Uh, so the next section is specifically about graduation proms and seniors. Uh, and I do not have a lot of information. I will read the questions, but what I can tell you right now is that I have guidance that schools are closed till April 28th. Uh, outside of that, uh, I'm waiting to see, we, I don't know that we will reopen. I'm going to say this, that has not been shared by the governor, but I, I, there is enough, uh, information that we are building for longer. Again, I'm going to say the governor has not said past April 28th. Uh, we have guidance through that point, uh, but we're continuing to build, uh, you know, up to that point and, and potentially, uh, longer if, if we need to. Um, but at right this point, I have till the 28th. Um, what about graduation and prom? I do not know and I, that is the honest truth and we are waiting and once we have that guidance of will we be able to do or will there be from the Oregon Health Authority, from the Oregon Department of Ed and from the governor to be able to have some sort of graduation? Will people might be in a room? Possibly, I don't know. Um, again, I, a lot of these questions are still unknowns to us and we will have guidance once we receive that from, uh, the, the high school guidance as we move, move forward. Here's what I can tell you because I continue to have a conversation with Principal Servigna as well as Kendra, who is one of our school board representatives. Um, and she has shared some information with me. What I can tell you is that her team, uh, Principal Servigna at the high school, high school, her team knows how important this process is to honor our seniors, uh, honoring the class. And once we have guidance, we will work as a team for high school, obviously with student voice being a part of that, uh, to make and build a plan to make sure that we can honor our seniors, uh, for the class of 2020 and the hard work that they have put in, uh, for their graduation. Um, but again, I want to be clear, I cannot at this point make any decisions about that because I only have guidance up to April 28th of, of that closure. Uh, once I have more guidance from them, we will continue to build plans, but please know that we take this very seriously and we will work with the students and our staff and the leadership at the high school to make it a memorable, whatever it might look like, uh, because we want to honor the students, uh, in the graduating class of, of 2020. Um, is my senior going? Yes.
Sorry, um, I wanted to stick along that line if I could possibly ask this. Um, generally, is there a way you could give us your thoughts on like, I guess, best and worst case scenario? I know that's very generalized, but.
So the, and I want to make sure I hear you correctly or make sure I'm asking the, or you're asking, I understand what you're asking. Are you wanting to know from my perspective, when it comes to graduation, a best-case scenario and potentially other scenarios that might happen?
Correct.
I think it, I think it could be, I think it could be anything of, it could be January, and again, I'm, I don't, I don't remember what the last day of school is. I think it's the 13th of, of June. Is that, is that right? Uh, June 13th is the last day of school. Let's say we got guidance that potentially we could do something. We could do it the last week of June. We could do things in the summer. We could do things in the fall. We could do things virtually, but part of that, I don't want to make decisions until we get more guidance. Um, because again, I also, you all know me very well, as much as I want our staff to have voice, our students, especially that senior class, working with the administration at the high school need to have voice in what those, what those look like, uh, moving forward. And so that's still a really hard, uh, you know, I, I do a lot of, I don't know what that's going to look like yet, uh, but we continue to, we will continue to do that because the honoring of, of that class is very important to us.
So can you answer that same question with regards to kind of overview of our schools? Or is that just too broad right now?
I can tell you, we have guidance through the 28th. Um, and Darcy, uh, uh, excuse me. Director Kirk asked, can I generally share of what my thoughts are for the rest of the year? Uh, what I know for a fact is we are closed till April 28th. What I also know for a fact is I'm watching district, or excuse me, watching states around us who were several weeks ahead. And again, this is all based on the curve of the COVID and where it is. And so I would just say that that's, if you are watching what other states are doing, there is a potential that this might go longer. And again, I want to be clear and I'm going to say it again, the governor has said up to April 28th and not passed anything of that. That's the guidance that I am going off of, but I also know that I am working with my team, uh, and that's a very large team to, uh, have all options moving forward if we get, again, another guidance tomorrow, more guidance Friday, more guidance next week, guidance the week after that, because that is how much at times it is changing, um, in us and how we make decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Kirk. Uh, Jen, I also have a, a question in regards to, uh, as you were talking about, um, maybe getting graduation into the summer. Um, a lot of the questions that I'm getting also are, um, what, what is the, I mean, I know we don't have any, any direction really because the governor hasn't said if we're going to be closed. But would, would it be fair to say that we could possibly maybe extend school into the summer? Um, is that, is that a possibility or is, is that a question that has, has come up?
Vidal, being very honest, I think that, I think we're going to look at everything. I think as we get more guidance, we will continue and those are large conversations because again, that's conversations with union leadership. It's conversations of, with families and what they would like and what that might look like. Uh, I don't know that I would say as a superintendent that anything is off the table, but what I'm trying to do is build what I know now from the Oregon Department of Education and that guidance, but knowing that once we potentially, if that's the guidance that, for example, that may stay through the rest of the year, then we can start, uh, and, and have had some, what I'm going to say, general conversations about what the fut- and I want to be very clear about this, very general conversations of what the future might look like. I am trying to build the here and the now. I am trying to go a little bit forward and I'm, I'm building the fast of the now, but I'm also trying to build potentially the future, but I don't, uh, Vidal, those are beginning conversations and I don't know that I have any more from that perspective, uh, because I think that those are, there are other voices that will want to continue to get feedback on if and when the timing or the closure should, uh, change or continue out further. That's the best, that's the best, uh, right now that I can give, the honest and transparent conver- or, uh, response I can give you right now.
And, and I can appreciate that. Thank you. And I think a lot of our constituents probably would do, would agree.
Um, so the, the, one of the other questions, will my senior, my, my senior is going to be able to graduate? He's been making credits online. Again, once we receive guidance, uh, of where we are with the high school, uh, then we will move forward as quickly as we can with our high school team. I know that, that, uh, Mrs. Servigna and, Ms. Servigna and her team are, and that's including her classified and licensed staff are, are ready whenever that guidance comes to be able to start, uh, moving forward in talking with seniors, uh, to make sure that we have given guidance to them and what that might look like as well as their families moving forward. And then we've had just some general education, uh, questions. Uh, will students be able to move forward next year? If so, what supports will we get to catch them up to their grade levels? Again, I think this is going to be an ongoing conversation. Uh, I am building, uh, plans up, you know, we're building this distance for learning for all. We have guidance through the 28th. Uh, we'll continue to have that conversation of what that looks like. Um, we can begin to do some new learning and so we're talking in what that looks like with the distance learning for all. So again, those conversations are continuing to happen. I do not have a solid answer right now because again, I'm building the short term to try and hopefully, once we get guidance from the governor, if this is going to end on the 28th or continue forward, uh, then we'll, we'll start to look at those pieces. Um, I have, so I'm going to pause. I have great faith in our staff. I think I get to walk buildings and I get to watch teachers teach. I get to watch our instructional assistance support. I get to watch our, uh, classified staff support in so many different ways with our teaching and learning side of, of our licensed staff. And I have great faith that in our, our staff. Once we get this going, we will get moving in the right direction. We were already moving in the right direction with our alignment K-5 with some of our essential common core standards. I think that work will continue at the middle school and high school. So I, I have great faith in our, our teachings and learning staff and that encompasses all of our educator staff in this district, that we will make sure that kids, kids will learn, that they're engaging and that they're moving forward. And again, that the, the leadership from the union has great voice in this right now. And I'm going to sound like a broken record because I am blessed to have that. I know that other school districts may be working through some difficult things. Um, they are honest with me, they are transparent with me and it is allowing us to build the plans that we think and know are going to be right for our kids and our staff moving forward. So, um, those are hard questions. I appreciate that question. We'll continue to, to grapple with that as we move forward and what this looks like, uh, again, up to the 28th and should that continue moving, moving forward? Um, how long, if at all, will school be extended beyond the current school year? Again, we're sort of waiting for that guidance. What I know is that, uh, we are closed up to April 28th and then after that, uh, we will continue to wait for guidance from that perspective. Um, how do we get, how do students get items for their lockers? So we are working right now on a process for that. Uh, Jason Clark, who oversees the safety and security for the district, uh, he actually, uh, leads the district team. He, to some degree right now, is our, uh, safety and security compliance as it relates to COVID. Uh, so he is helping to build protocols. Uh, we are working on a protocol to be able to get items that are essential that students need from the lockers. We don't have it completely built yet. Uh, that's part of what we're trying to do. So if and when we can start rolling out things that we might be able to do, uh, some of those pieces, uh, working with, with that. But again, that we need to build a protocol because I have to, um, you know, it's safety not only of our staff, but, uh, making sure that we, uh, really have that process of bringing items out of the buildings to give to our, our students and our, our families. So please know that that's a work in progress, but we are working on a protocol right now to make that happen, uh, here in the next, uh, week or few weeks coming forward. Uh, what's happening at kindergarten registration? I thank you for that person that, uh, sent that. Uh, that is on our list to tackle. I don't have any other information at that point. Uh, we do normally have, uh, kindergarten, uh, uh, fam jam, which happens out at the Polk County Fairgrounds. Uh, that has been canceled, so we will, uh, continue to build that. Uh, we want to get the distance learning for all built and then we will, uh, start to look at what we need to build moving forward. Um, again, if the closure continues and then leading into the, uh, 2021, uh, school year. Uh, the next section is, is really focused on the safety and security as it relates to COVID-19. Um, so what precautions will be taken next year to prevent, to prevent the spread of COVID-19? Are you prepared for parents to keep their children out of school until either a cure or a vaccine is available for COVID-19? Uh, so, um, I sat last week on a national phone call, uh, with, uh, the Association of Supervision and Curriculum Development. It's short, it stands for ASCD. Um, I've been involved in that organization for a very long ti- time. Uh, they are the backbone of the whole child and how we develop new education to develop the whole child that academic, social, so students are healthy, safe, engaged, supported and challenged in their learning. Um, I can tell you that, uh, in that conversation, the lead of, uh, one of the leads that is the connection between public health and public education, uh, in, in what those systems look like and what our schools should look like, uh, was on that webinar in sharing information. And what I will tell you is this is going to be guided by first and foremost, the Center for Disease Control, which will give guidance to the Oregon Health Authority, which will then give guidance to the Oregon Department of Ed, which will then gi- give guidance to, uh, school districts across this state. So that is really, we will wait for that guidance. Um, I know that those conversations, we know that potentially that, that it will look different, uh, moving forward. We don't know what that looks like. Again, I'm going to say I know up to the 28th. Uh, I can pers- I can project out a little bit of what I think's going to happen, but again, I want to say the governor, what I can tell you right now is up to the 28th is the guidance that I have. And again, Jason Clark, who is our lead safety and security, he is doing an excellent job. We have monitors at every building to make sure that if and when staff are in the building, that they're doing social distancing, that they're practicing the protocols if they're moving from room to the next, of sanitizing, washing their hands, uh, and all of those processes. If they have to work with materials, they're putting on gloves. So all of those processes, we are currently building. We built that before we even allowed staff to come in and we will follow those same processes if and when we get that opportunity to bring both staff completely back into the building and/or students back into the building. But again, that's going to be guided by first and foremost, at the national level, the Center for Disease Control, moving to the Oregon Health Authority, the governor, down to the Oregon Department of Education, and then that will be, uh, shared with us moving forward. Um, because again, that's the leadership within our dis- or, within our state.
I have a question about, about the, um, when you mentioned staff being back into the, into the schools and being monitored, um, that is, that's one of the questions that, that's on our list. I'm not sure if you're going to, going to hit that or not, but I, I figured I might as well bring it up. Um, what are, what are the teachers doing in, in the schools? Are they gearing up to do social distance learning? Are they gearing their classrooms up to maybe, uh, be able to teach from their classrooms? Um, why aren't they able to teach from their classrooms? I mean, I know we're looking for guidance from the ODE, so I'm sure that's probably the answer.
Uh, no, I appreciate that. So I am, I am, I take this very seriously. Uh, the question is, you know, what are, what are people, if there is staff in the building, what are the staff doing in the buildings? Are they setting up classrooms? Are teachers in there? Um, to some degree, most of our staff is working remotely. A majority of our staff is working remotely. That is part of the reason why we asked them this past week to come in and get their Chromebooks. Um, because I, the governor has made it clear, stay home, save lives. We are trying to abide by that even while we know we are a central part of this process. Uh, we have built meetings just like this. Uh, we're using platforms to have meetings with very large groups such as this. Um, but there are some nuances that we have to have in the building. So we have food service staff in the building. We have, we are still cleaning buildings, so the custodians are still in buildings. Our principals, every once in a while are coming into the buildings and taking, making sure that they're doing that. We've even asked principals to remotely work from home because I am trying to take the stay home, save lives very seriously. So when and if we get to a point where we can move forward to bringing staff back in, that we will have staff. Um, I know that, um, and again, there are categories even with amongst that, that, uh, we know that staff, that staff may have been exposed to the COVID. Uh, we may have staff that is working with or has a relative that may have a, uh, and I'm blanking on the word right now, so I'm asymptomatic to that. They may also be, uh, supporting another, a family member who, again, as an example, could be fighting cancer or has some of those pieces that makes them more vulnerable to that. So we took all of that into consideration in working with and building our system. So we are doing our best to keep our staff home, knowing that we're trying to engage. Um, and it's pretty awesome to watch. Uh, I've got snapshots of our adminis- our five building administrators are talking, uh, virtually every day and, and helping to build guidance. We have teams every day, uh, building on, on virtual, but we do have those pieces where we do have to come into the building, so, um, we're doing that. I'll give you another example because I've, I've talked a little bit about internet and wifi. We've had some rare cases where staff don't have access to, to that at their homes. So allowing a little bit of flexibility for staff that may need to come in, but that is on a very rare case-by-case basis because again, I take the directive that the governor has said, stay home, save lives. This will get us through it as we move forward in the best interest of our students, our staff and our community, uh, from a safety and security perspective. So that is a little bit of why, and again, Jason is helping to make sure, um, Jason has had to stop a few things because we have some really great ideas that are coming from our staff because we know our staff wants to connect with kids, but the directive from the governor is stay home, save lives. And until that changes, we need to abide by that as a school district while continuing to move this work forward. to move this work forward to support and build that distance learning for all platform.
So Jen, just to clarify.
All right, thank you.
Teachers are not in the buildings. They're going in periodically, and then they're going back to work from home.
Right now, a lot of them are working remotely. There are a handful, again, where where cases where we do have some teaching staff in the buildings. We have classified with our meals and when, obviously, with our bus drivers. Our administrators are a little bit of in and out of that building. I think as we get high school guidance, I think high school will have a little bit more staff, and we're very, Jason has been working very closely with Principal Servin Yav, what that's gonna look like and making sure those protocols.
We're basically operating on an exception basis.
Very much an exception.
Very few people in the building, period. Everybody working from home.
Correct, as best as possible.
Yeah, okay.
And Cece Kunch, who's our business manager, just said, we just, part of this is also about the cleaning of the buildings, that if we're in spaces, then we have to go re-clean, and so then that takes us away of other parts that we need to focus on and from that perspective. So again, again, it's it's very much. I I'll be very honest, I, as the superintendent, I am in the district office every day. I I am, I, because I'm the superintendent, and so I will continue to do that. And we are practicing social distancing. There's about, there's usually no more than about, I would say, six or seven in the building in the district office. And so we're, even as we're talking, we're, we have social distance guidance. If you move from one room to the next, you have to wash your hands or re-san, re-hand re-hand sanitize your hands so we can make sure that our spaces. And then we have a great custodial crew that's coming into the district office and cleaning it every day, moving, moving forward.
So is it, is it safe to say that that teachers can can go and get their, get the stuff that they need on a case-by-case basis, or is are they freely able to go in, or do they have to call in, or?
If if there, that is, we want them to be working through the the principals, and we'll continue to to share that. Again, not, please, not that we do not trust staff, but part of this is, we have a protocol to get into the building. Like, if you're gonna walk in and go into your classroom, like, it's so specific, you, we won't let, so I'll just, I'll be transparent and share the protocol. No more than five in a building at one time. They must continue the social distancing of six feet apart. Once they enter the building, they are required to either hand sanitize or wash their hands. Then they put on gloves. Once they put on gloves, they are allowed to bring one bag into the building. They take that bag to their room. Once they're in their room, they place that bag on the floor, not on a surface, because if they put it on a surface, we have to re-clean, and floors are easier to clean than surfaces. Once they're in their room, they keep their gloves on, they grab what they need to grab, they put it in their bag, they grab their bag, they come back to the entry exit location. We ask them to, and we do training through Safe Schools on how to pull off your gloves, so they pull off their gloves in the appropriate way. And then they re-wash their hands or sanitize, pick up their bag, and walk out. And so those are the processes that we'll continue to follow, and and staff are continuing to work with their building principals if they need to get in there. And then we'll continue to have those conversations as we build the distance learning, because there may be a point where, from the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee, that we are gonna need some more materials that are in the classrooms. And so we'll build that to be able to have staff access that in their classrooms. And then again, just, you know, how are we gonna spend the remainder of the school year? I don't think it's even close to being safe to let kids back into class. Again, my guidance is we have till April 28th. I'm not gonna disagree with that person, but I want to be clear, the governor has said through April 28th. But we are also looking at what that might look like as a plan moving forward. And then, again, that was a majority of the questions, and and again, I, we grouped because a lot of different ones, but I think we captured from all the questions that were asked, at least at this, at this point. The the last one that we have is, my concern is some of the kids that are not safe at home right now. Do we have, do we have a, and I apologize, it's really small, so excuse me here for a second. Do we have a key to keep word or some sort of signal to check, or safe word, or some sort of signal to check to see how kids are doing? I saw a report that that all reports are down, and this means mandatory reporting, because if you are a school district employee, we are mandatory reporters as it relates to abuse for for students. That reports are down because kids aren't getting attended to school or going to the doctor. How can we, as a community, keep children safe from the abuse at home right now? So one of the things that I will say is, as we get into the distance learning, and our staff knows this, and they will continue it, that our staffers are mandatory reporters. And so as we get into the distance learning, if there is something shared or through this process that we learn of, we are required by law to report that to the the appropriate authorities, and we will do that. And we will continue to do that as we build our distance learning for all with our staff. If there are concerns from parents and or families, I want to be clear, if you have a concern, it does not stop you from calling the non-emergency line. You can also contact the Department of Human Services, and I'm gonna give that number, and we'll make sure to make sure to post that as well if families need it. And again, that's the Department of Human Services, and anyone, if anyone has any concerns at any point, you can call. And that number is 1-855-503-SAFE, which is 7233. And I'm gonna say that again. It's the Department of Human Services. If you have any concerns, anyone can call that, specifically dealing with a student that may have some sort of abuse, and it's 1-855-503-7233.
Are there any other questions from the board members?
I I have one, and and I I think we kind of touched on it a little bit, but I I just wanted to really get it brought up, because, you know, there's, there's a few of my constituents that are pretty, pretty adamant about getting this question out there. And and it's basically, when we, when we talk about equity, equity being 100%, you know, being able to to reach our our kids, there's, in their opinion, about 10% of the kids that aren't able to to be online taught, or have access to internet, or have access to computers, or etc. But their their concern is that the other 90% of the of the student population that is able to do that, they feel like they're they're being held to the lowest standard because of of the 10%. I I don't really know how to phrase the question, or, or present, does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Do you want to go ahead, Steve?
Yeah, I would, I would say it this way, that how do we balance making progress for the majority of the district while recognizing that that we have to have an equitable approach and make sure that we're not leaving anybody behind? Now, are we?
And actually, you're phrasing it correctly, Steve. And I, and I think that has something to do with funding from the state or from federal funding. If we could just address that for our constituents, that'd be great.
So, again, part of this, we have been building from, you know, from a supplemental learning perspective, and and we had a really intentional conversation as we started this to say, hey, we don't, we potentially don't, if this is gonna be supplementing learning for the rest of the year, let's start with a, and again, we were very intentional, let's start with that packet approach, let's, let's get all of our computers into one spot, knowing that potentially that we are going to have to divvy all of those out. There are, there are districts that are moving very fast, and that's fine. I I believe that our approach in the long run of of getting information out and then being able to bring all the Chromebooks into one spot, because they were in all five different buildings, we have all of them there, we have to clean them. Again, I want to be clear is, we are a school district of 3,300. I have 17 total administrators. We have staff that has come in to support that, but we're also trying to balance the safety and and security of our staff in in doing that, and so so making sure that we're we're moving forward. I feel that we are moving at the pace to be able to get both that information, both in our Chromebooks out to staff, as well as we know we're gonna have to do both. We are still gonna have to do both a Chromebook and packet approach over the next few weeks because we're going to have to meet all the needs of our our students. So again, we're building off of the first guidance of supplemental learning. We'll begin with the rollout at the high school with the Chromebooks first, because again, there's credits and and key things that we need to build. But I also want to be clear that our staff has to build the distance learning. So we're gonna give Chromebooks to students, but our staff is still building that process to be able to do those platforms. And we will, we will have a a good plan moving forward by the end of this week and what that looks like, and have started some good work with that committee. And then, again, we'll continue to share with our staff what that looks like and some of the the key steps that we made today and how that will will continue. So we know throughout this whole process that Chromebooks and and the multimedia approaches that we will take, based off of the definition from the Oregon Department of Education for Distance Learning, will be part of that process. So again, I I am believing, based off of the timeframes that we have, that we are meeting and will meet that guidance. But I want to be clear, we're still gonna have technology issues that we're gonna have to jump through to support this, once we even get the technology out to students, and to be able to support our staff as they use that technology also. So this is a work in progress. We are asking educators to do some heavy lifting to build a new platform of learning. We are very intentional about, we want kids engaged. I will give a, I will give a couple examples. So the uni, or, or, excuse me, the Los Angeles Unified School District, 150,000 students in their school district. Gave Chromebooks out to everybody. Started a sort of an online platform, kids can, there was a mix of, teachers had some stuff built and other things that they were working through. The first day of online learning, they have 150,000 students in their school district, 1,500 got online. That's 1%. So we want to make sure that our engagement as we build this, that we're being able to do it, so kids are getting online, they're doing the activities, they're, they're maybe doing some projects as they they've developed the learning and how we do this together with families. Because again, I want to also articulate that we know that there's gonna be some stress on families, because we're gonna try and make things as crystal clear as we can, but there still may be bumps that kids may not understand, and so we're gonna have to work side by side with our families. I think this falls very, we have four strategic goals: student growth and achievement, family involvement, staff leadership and continuous improvement, and community partnership. And right now, that student growth and achievement, family involvement, and staff leadership and continuous improvement is in the works and how we do this collectively together. And so, again, we are trying to build for all, because my job is to educate all, knowing that we're going to need to differentiate our instruction moving forward in this platform.
So that, and I I appreciate that that response, but I I still have some constituents that are feeling that their, theirs, their kids are being held to the lowest standard because of of waiting for for everything to fig, to to figure everything out for the others that are are not able to, I mean, and then it's unfortunate, the others that are not able to to have access to internet or have access to to computers. We're gonna get there, I I know that, as far as the Chromebooks go, but, you know, there's, they're, they're feeling like that we're being held to the lower, not we, but but some of their kids are being held to the lowest standard because of, you know, not wanting to, to not get funding, or, does that make sense?
I I would think that that's, that's really on the minds of our administrative team. I think they're trying to balance that as best as possible. This week, even tonight's board meeting, we're trying to get a lot of information out. And, you know, teach, the first package went out on so, social, emotional learning this week. Another package is about to come out. We're working as quick as we can to get Chromebooks and have distance learning start as soon as next week. So I, I mean, speaking on behalf of the administration here a little bit, I I think we're just a few days from, you know, seeing some real progress for those folks that may be frustrated, and we would ask just for a little bit more patience, because I think we're getting there, and there is a lot of work going on behind the scenes, as you heard the superintendent talk about tonight.
And I appreciate that answer. I just, I just wanted to get that out there and so that, so that our constituents could hear that, that answer and know that we're, we're working on something and and.
Yeah, it's a great point. I had one last question. What is the plan to put out, like, additional information, frequently asked questions? Where where can the community go to get the latest information?
So we're, really, the platforms that we're using right now are both, we've been using a lot of School Messenger to to send out messages, so that will continue. And that's both via email and voicemail, from that perspective. Then we also have our communication via Facebook. We're trying to do all of this also in both English and Spanish to make sure we're, the communication is going to all of our community. And then we also are posting things on the the website. So our our goal is to, and we've been trying to, every, every other day or every third day, get information out. I have been learning from the states around me that, you know, about an every other day approach, because again, I'm trying to balance the stress of families and what they're they're working through. And so, you know, too much sometimes information can be overwhelming for families, and so we're just trying to find that balance of every other communication. Again, we knew tonight, we were gonna share a lot of information publicly. And again, I think we're trying to figure out what are those best avenues as we continue to go through that and what that might look like, and knowing that the School Messenger, the Facebook, and then our website have been those key platforms outside of this meeting today.
Perfect, okay. That was a lot. Thank you, Superintendent, for going through all that and giving us all that background and detailed information. You can tell there's a lot of work going on to deal with the current situation. So, moving on with the agenda, we do have a financial update. I'll pass it over to Cece to give us the financial program.
Cece, do you want to take my spot?
Hi. I will not get on camera for this. I just will come closer to the microphone. Twenty nineteen, twenty appropriations report as of the end of February, and there, there are no anomalies. Things are in good shape for that, so I'm not gonna go into detail on that report.
Any questions for Cece? Pretty straightforward update?
I mean, I don't know if we're, we're opening up the door for money spent, but I know that one of the questions that I had sent in was from a, from some constituents about the purchase of the Ash Creek Bible property. Are we discussing that right now, or is that part of the the track report?
No, that's gonna come up in our business agenda here in just a couple minutes, but I'll.
Okay, great.
Hold tight on that. Okay, that brings us to our board report. Just a couple things that are in your packet. Board meeting in May is on the 5th at 6:30. Our normal budget committee meetings are on hold, pending additional guidance from ODE.
Can I add something to that, Steve? Right now, we are planning to do a very similar approach to the May 5th, as we are doing right now, so I just want to make that that clear, potentially, if we are still.
Yeah, we can assume we'll be virtual on the 5th and be doing a live stream again. Good point. We hope, we don't have any other meetings at this point in time on our calendar in the near future.
No, not at this moment. Not at this moment.
We are here to help, though, if you need us.
Yep.
Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. There's just two, two things in our consent agenda tonight. It's the approval of minutes from our last two meetings in March, and then a few personnel recommendations. Do I have a a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve.
Thank you for the, or is there a second?
Done.
Actually, we had a second here in the room from board member Job, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor of approving the consent agenda. Just give a verbal. Uh just give a verbal, um aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Myself.
Aye.
Okay, very good. And now that does bring us to our business agenda. And we will be discussing the option that we have to purchase the property at 1483 North 16th Street across from Ash, Ash Creek Elementary. So do you want me to turn this over to you Superintendent or?
Yeah.
To, okay.
Yeah, so uh we have had an opportunity um uh come forward and uh you know, there are unique times uh as we work through things. Uh and we, again, as I, as I share this, we want to always uh, we want to have voice of our community in this, but there are times that things happen and uh just unique situations. And so um there is a property that is uh really on the end of 16th. Uh I'm gonna say kitty corner to Ash Creek. Uh also, uh as was uh addressed by uh Director Vidal, uh that was uh, uh one of the charter schools within the, within our uh city uh community. Uh we know that um just from this, as we started the year, our enrollment has been up. We're about up 100 students uh within the school district. Uh we know that this is still continuing to be an attractive place to come and learn and live. Uh live and then obviously, we're gonna potentially have kids and, and students that would be part of, of the school district. Um we know that there are, the housing prices around us continue to, to rise, but uh we still have in our community affordable homes and, and different options of uh space for families to move into. Uh and so uh we believe that we, and based off of even some of our um projections that we did uh two years ago, uh we talked a lot about um potentially we were gonna see an increase in enrollment. Uh that came sooner than what we thought. And like I said, we're up about 100 students. So uh this sort of unprecedented growth and how we're, we're continuing to see that. Uh we, I can tell you that in conversations with our elementary principals, uh there is concern that we are going to need additional classrooms. Uh and so had started those conversations with them uh because of that enrollment increase and potentially what will be coming and moving forward uh from that, that perspective. So um we had moved into Ash Creek already, two modulators. We did that last year because they have, have run out of space. And, and we added two of those modulators to give uh two more kindergarten classrooms as an example, or two more classrooms within that facility. So again, we are, we are, this is a unique opportunity to potentially purchase uh a property that could help us out immensely in uh some of these areas uh on there. And Cece, do you want to describe the property a little bit on that, from that perspective? Or you want me to go ahead and, and do that?
Uh I, I can do that if you want to.
Perfect. I'm gonna switch you then.
Uh thank you. Um I think um you know, this was one of these situations where we uh had not ever considered having the plan to um purchase a piece of property so close to our other buildings. But it is one of those where when that becomes an opportunity, sometimes you look at it um as our board has done in discussions and said, you know, if we, there, there's a lot of potential here and this is a great opportunity to get this. Um there are 2.63 acres at the corner of 16th and Hoffman. Uh the building itself is, was built as a church. Uh the building uh in the appraisal that was done was noted that it has an appraised value of 1.3 million dollars. Um it was listed at that, the price had been reduced. And most recently, the asking price was $775,000. Uh that consists of two very large open spaces, um some smaller, not really classroom size, but uh potentially maybe preschool meeting size or there were small meeting spaces in there. There is a large kitchen and most notably, uh the portables that were used by Mid Valley Christian Academy, those are still on the property and part of the purchase price. So that is six modular classrooms. Um the, those uh, there was an, we have had an inspection done. Those are in very good shape. The building itself uh has about another 30 years in the lifespan according to the appraiser. Um there's a lot of potential and flexibility. And I think what we looked at, partially the land, it's certainly not big enough to build a school on, it's not big enough to um and, and too close to the other things. But the opportunity to have some of our other district operations located so closely down the road. And all those were sort of future uses. That probably isn't as compelling as um what Jennifer was talking about when she said, you know, there's a potential that we may bring kids back, maybe even this summer, but we won't be able to teach them in a traditional classroom. Or we would have to have no more than 10 of them in a traditional sized classroom. Um the potential in this space, the building is fully wired, it has a projection system. The opportunity to bring in a few more children potentially with a distance learning type atmosphere. Um suddenly, this became a, a flexible space we just don't have in our district to be able to teach kids in a new way. Um that became a little more compelling to us and, and just an opportunity, even meetings and trainings. We, you know, we have large district trainings either in Hawk Hall, which you've all seen. People are pretty crowded close together. Um or in the high school cafeteria, which uh is not very conducive to meetings and training. So having an opportunity for those kinds of spaces to do the work we see ourselves doing in the future makes us a very compelling space. It has a large kitchen with commercial kitchen equipment. Um that's something, again, what we're finding uh as, as Dr. Cabista mentioned, our lunch program is very successful. We are feeding uh so many kids. And we are actually have started a program last week where families can now pick up seven days worth of meals for their kids on one day. So we can feed into the weekends. We have uh capacity to do that. We don't have capacity to store that right now. We are, are missing the opportunity to be able to feed more kids right now just because we don't have refrigerator space or kitchen space. So um there are some other uses that I think have really risen um to, to make this a valuable choice for a property.
Cece, I think we need to um also let the uh, the community know that when it comes to um having a commercial kitchen, the, the commer- the equipment alone, it's, it's very spendy. I know as a, as a former restaurant owner and, and, and being a part of different restaurants, part of the, the most amazing costs are, is, is um kitchen equipment. And if this is gonna come with kitchen equipment, that, that's a huge value right there. And not only, not only just monetarily, but you know, and like what you were saying, how we can use it within our district to support our, our, our kids and, and, and our, our kitchen staff. Um I think that's a very valuable point to, to include. I just wanted to, to chime in on that.
Yeah, thanks. Uh and, and yeah, you haven't looked at it yet, so you, you'd be good to give me a good assessment of it. But it is very large space and they did have, obviously, it was the kitchen space for the school. Um all of those appliances are included. There's a lot of folding tables and chairs and things like that that are also included. So yes, thank you. There are, the purchase price, which is currently $775,000 includes all of that.
Okay, I think at this point um we can entertain additional questions from the board. I mean, obviously, we had a discussion in the month of March about this.
I'm, I'm going to uh, want to start that with um just some questions from some constituents um in regards to the purchase of it. Uh they want to know where the money is going to come from to purchase this. And um well, I'll just leave it at that. That's the, that's the first question.
That's a good question, how, how we would fund this.
Yeah, so Vidal's question about where is the funding coming from? The district levies a construction excise tax on new square footage or additional square footage in either residential or commercial construction. Um that money has been used in the past to increase our capacity. That was the money that was used, for example, to add the two portable modular buildings to Ash Creek that, that we talked about. Um and earlier this year, the board chose to use some of that money to purchase um expanding space at Talmage to create a new choir um classroom that would be specifically designed for that purpose. That fund still um has over, you know, after the Talmage portable, it has about 1.5 million dollars in it. That fund is, has been on hold. We would use that certainly um for a match if, if we went out for a bond in the future. Um but that money is used to expand capacity for our district to either provide learning facilities or support facilities for the district.
And that fund can only be used for that purpose.
Right.
But it's not enough to do major construction.
Right.
It's enough to do kind of short-term solutions typically like modular or retrofit. So in some ways, it, it actually is a fund that, I mean, this is a great opportunity.
Okay, you're standing right up against the mic.
You're just gonna have to speak up, Mr. Love.
I think it's because I keep turning my head away from
Yeah.
the microphone and turn to look at Cece or Jen. Yeah, my point was that this is a good opportunity to use the construction excise tax, that particular fund. Um you know, for this, this type of a, a purchase. We would have used this type of fund in the past for modulators or something along those lines. Are there other questions from the board? Vidal, did you have another question?
I have one.
Go ahead, Jerry.
If the, is the seller, um the last time we talked, there was a cash offer on the table. Is that, is, is the seller still waiting on that or is that gone towards now?
Thank you, Jerry. Your question about any other offers on the property. This property, again, for the community, was discussed in executive session. The reason those things are discussed in executive session is there might be sensitive information um that other, either the seller or other buyers may not want disclosed. Um we have, as far as I know, we have the, the only off, current accepted offer on the table. And that offer has been negotiated as an accepted offer. Um so if in fact, uh you as a board choose not to go through with the purchase tonight, then the market, then the property would be back open to the market. And I'm not sure if there are other buyers in position behind us.
So I, I, I also have a question on the, on the purchase. Um when we're talking about using that construction uh excise money, um there was, there, and then, I mean, I don't know if it's, I mean, it has to be public knowledge because it was brought to my attention by, by one of my constituents about other properties that we might be able to, to sell in order to, to cover those costs. Um is there any way that we can maybe look at that more than using our construction um money? So that we can use that construction money towards, you know, maybe some other remodels or, or future construction on say, Talmage or MES or, or any of those schools that, that really need it um before we go for a bond?
Sure. Uh thanks, Vidal. There, the uh other mention um at the last board meeting, the board uh declared two properties as surplus and authorized the disposal of our two rural schools, Oak Grove and Eola. Uh those properties will be put out on the market. We will be placing them out under a request for proposal. Um and the money from that, if those properties are eventually sold, the board has full discretion on how to allocate the sale. Um typically, my experience is with the city of Monmouth, uh we can choose to put that into a special fund. We can choose to put that and dedicate it to capital funding for the future, absolutely. Um the request, the request for a proposal process, unfortunately, uh I had planned to prepare that, get those out to market. That has not happened yet, just for your information. I think I told the school board that would happen shortly after our March meeting. But some other things happened after our March meeting that have basically taken us 60 to 75 hours a week to take care of. So that will get, that will um happen yet, I hope, within the next week. And, and uh we have had some folks expressed interest in those properties. Hopefully, we would have another um opportunity to replenish those funds, absolutely.
So potentially, the um, the money gained from the sale of those surplus properties could go back into our, our uh construction fund. Uh or we can allocate it other places.
Yes, yes. The board would choose what to do with the sale proceeds from any other property we sell. And absolutely, my recommendation would be to put that back into a capital project fund, but that would be up to the board at the time.
Sure. Okay. Well, I think that, that answer is a, is a great one for, for our constituents.
Are there any other questions? Go ahead, Darcy.
Hey, um I just had a question. I know that this is um something that some people are just hearing about. Um I know it was in passport notes and, and other things, but I think there are gonna be a lot of questions. I hate to throw this out there, but you know, we have Henry Hill still in that space. So I know there's reasons why we are not using that sta- space, but I think for community people to hear that would be very beneficial this time when we're talking about it, of purchasing new space.
I, I agree with Darcy. That's, that's been a question that's come up uh from some of my constituents as well as to why we're purchasing other properties rather than rededicating Henry Hill to, to uh to, to be a school again, which you know, I, I think would, would make sense and, and move the district office to this new facility. I mean, I think we need that new facility. I, I mean, I'm all for it. I think we need to do that because then we can, we can play with that.
And let Steve have it.
Yeah, I think both of those points um are really good ones. And I think there was quite a bit of discussion at the last board meeting about, you know, that, that very issue of, you know, how do you put this into context of the overall long range facilities plan? What's the, what's the role of Henry Hill? I, I think that we can continue to look at Henry Hill, but this is a unique opportunity uh that's, that's come along. That, you know, I, I, I think it's um, as compared to some of the investments that would be required in Henry Hill, it's probably a better investment. And of course, if he, if we were to purchase this property, it does have value down the road as well.
I think the other thing to point out about this, I, I don't anticipate we would use this as a school. It, it's, the port, the value of the portables to us would not necessarily be trying to put kids into the portables, although we could, um and provide them, you know, lunches there and some kind of library experience there. I, I think the value would be in the portables and being able to deploy them rapidly somewhere else. Um you know, we, if, if, and we don't know frankly, what our enrollment will look like for fall with all of this sort of disruption that's taking place. Um but the opportunity to own those portables, to get them ready and then be able to redeploy them where they're needed quickly. them where they're needed quickly, is of huge value to us. Our maintenance staff of two people has a lot of work there doing right now because of all the changes in our building operations.